Row.
Here.
Begley.
Here.
Harding.
Here.
Johnson is absent. Melton.
Here.
Palermo.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remarks by Councilmember Danny Begley.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon, everybody. I just want to reach out to recognize that with Labor Day coming up on Monday, it's a long holiday for many of us. But for fire, police, and public works, utility workers, our frontline caregivers in nursing homes and hospitals, I want to thank the everyday wage earners and make our lives easier and us to enjoy this weekend. So, thank you.
An affidavit of publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, and welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate having you here, and we look forward to hearing your testimony. We request that you turn off your cell phones, or at least turn them to vibrate.
Item six, a resolution to approve the City of Omaha 2022 property tax requests.
As required by state law, we had a public hearing on this item at 1:00 today. Item number six is for a vote. Roll call.
Row.
Yes.
Begley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved, six to zero. Item seven, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Redwood-Winninghoff located northeast of Sorensen Parkway and Winninghoff Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number seven is today. Proponents, please. Yeah, please come down. Just your name and address for the record there.
Sure. Paul DeCryf, Redwood, 7007 East Pleasant Valley Road, Independence, Ohio. I have a slight, a small presentation.
Okay.
I think that... I think that'll do it. Given that this is the first time that we've presented, I'd like to take a few minutes to talk a little bit about Redwood, who we are, what we do, and why we do it. I'm joined today by John Coolidge with Lamprey Neerson, our local civil engineer. On behalf of John, myself, our firms, I'd like to say thanks to staff for all their help. I'd also like to thank you for your time and consideration of our proposal. So with that, I'd like to speak to you in the only way that I know how at Redwood, and that's openly and honestly. You can see that that's core value number five of eight. All these core values are not just simply words to me and my colleagues, but they are a pathway to success. And we at Redwood have been very successful doing one thing, and that's the development of two-bedroom, two-bath, two-car garage, single-story townhome rental neighborhoods. We've been doing that since 1991, when our founder, Steve Kimmelman, began the company with a few simple goals. And that was to create uniquely stressful, stressless, remarkable apartment homes. Steve also wanted to control the development and long-term management of the company. To date, we have over 13,000 units, and we've never sold one. Those 13,000 units are currently located out east in the Carolinas, as well as here now, coming to Omaha. All of what we do doesn't happen by accident. Each Redwood neighborhood benefits from over 400 industry practitioners like myself, including one manager and one maintenance manager at each location. Those two individuals often live at the community themselves, more often than not. You'll see soon how unique we are. Our communities are unique, our buildings are unique, and our residents are unique. That unique design and style allows us to manage like no other traditional apartment community. We have rules and regulations that everyone must follow, as well as everyone at the community over 18 goes through a criminal and credit check. You can see all of our sampling of our screening criteria. Redwood's application screening criteria is more robust and allows us to control the property and what happens at the property at a greater level than most HOAs and single-family subdivisions. So who are our residents? They're empty nesters, young professionals, residents who want that single-story design, those who want a peace and quiet. And again, it's that design that really helps us maintain that. That 13,000 portfolio, the data within that, it's not like there's 130 or 1,300. We know who our residents are in our portfolio. We know who they will be there at this Redwood neighborhood. Our average age in our portfolio is 51. 70% are empty nesters. Most relocate from a three-mile radius, so they're already neighbors. They're already within the community. There's 1.65 residents per home, 1.5 cars per home, 11 school-aged children per 100 homes. Those children are often already in the school district. And the rents that we charge at our Redwood neighborhoods often equate to the home ownership value somewhere between $350,000 and $450,000, depending on taxes. And nearly 3.5 of the original residents in Redwood neighborhoods that are 10 years old or older still call Redwood home. Ex...I don't know how to make that sound. We'll just, I'll scroll up and down. Exterior features in a Redwood neighborhood include zero-grade private entrances, again catering to that empty nester, lever door handles are on the inside, two-car attached private garage, personal patios, concrete drives, stone and shake siding accent, extensive landscaping, construction management to ADA and GSE compliant, long-term asset management. You can see some of the architectural features now in some of our existing neighborhoods. You see that personal patio on the left-hand side, as well as some of the architectural features down below that on the left-hand side. You have an accent in the gable. You have windows in the garages, and then that front stone accent piece. Over on the right-hand side, you can see in that strip on the left, you'll see that's our rear-loaded garage product, and I'll get to that in a minute. Interior, some of the interior features include open-concept floor plans, vaulted ceilings, luxury vinyl plank floor, granite countertops, high-end appliances, generous closets and pantries, full-size washer and dryer hookups. There's a bonus room and den. And then our construction is to Energy Star. Here's our unit types. Our smallest unit type is just under 1,300 square feet. Our largest unit type on the right-hand side is just over 1,600 square feet. And then in the middle, that's that rear-loaded garage unit. So the front, the top of that schematic up here is that front porch. And that's just a little quote from one of our residents. We get those from time to time from our marketing department. That speaks to desirability from empty nesters. So this is our site, just kind of getting into the meat of things. It is currently a vacant site at the corner of Winninghoff and Sorensen. Currently, the site allows for a much more intense use than what Redwood has, what we have proposed. Here's the site summary. As you can see, it's 25.79 acres, 157 units. Density is at six units an acre, 31 buildings. There are four parking spaces per home, two covered, two in the driveway. Our starting rents for that smallest unit, that unit that's just under 1,300 square foot, we anticipate today that it would be around $1,700 per month, and that's before utilities and any other premiums. As you can see on the left-hand side, it's a site summary analysis, which shows that we meet or exceed most setbacks and lack coverage. Here's the site plan itself. Our development is designed, was driven in part by the need to create connectivity between 84th Street to the north and Winninghoff via Whitmore. These are the only city streets. All other roads will be private drives. That's everything to the right on your screen. There'll be posted speed limits of 12 miles an hour with no parking. Roadway improvements also include enhanced turning lanes. As you can see at the curve of Whitmore, you'll see our leasing center and mail kiosks. This is a schematic of our landscaping. All I wanted to do is point out here, 229 trees. I also wanted to point out that during the process, we had a neighborhood meeting while attended. There were two concerns that came out of that. Up here in the left-hand corner, one of the homeowners was concerned about a very large tree. We went back and verified that, in fact, that tree would not be removed as part of our development. We also received a question concerning this trail that we're going to be installing as part of the development. Resident wanted to know who was going to maintain that. We confirmed that we will be doing that. Here's some quick pictures of our interiors, a little bit bigger. You notice the pendant lights, six panel doors, island kitchen countertop, luxury vinyl plank flooring. There's our, one of our bathrooms. You can see walk-in shower, again catering to our empty nesters, double bowl vanities, bedroom with a walk-in closet, garage. A lot of people sometimes ask us how much, I'm moving from a home, which is, most of our residents are moving out of a home and trying to get downsized, and also trying to get that maintenance fee, maintenance-free lifestyle. They want to know how much storage they have. On a square-foot basis, you can see at the bottom, our very smallest unit, which we're really not using in here, is 150 square feet. And that's not including the pantries that are there or any of the kitchens. This is just within the closets, extra closet space, and the sides of the garages. And in conclusion, I'm here to answer any questions, and I thank you for your consideration.
Great. Thank you for the presentation, and welcome to Omaha Market.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed? Roll call.
Row.
Yes.
Begley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seven is approved, six to zero. Item eight, a resolution to approve the revised preliminary plat for Lake Cunningham Village located southeast of 96 and State Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number eight is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is an 84 allotted, single-family subdivision, which is the second phase of the Lake Cunningham Village. Simply here to answer any questions that you might have regarding this matter.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed? Roll call.
Row.
Yes.
Begley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eight is approved, six to zero. Items nine and 10 can be considered together for Daybreak located north of 192nd and Ford Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item nine, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Daybreak. Item 10, a resolution to approve a waiver to the present development zone specifications of the urban development element of the City of Omaha master plan.
Public hearing and vote on items number nine and 10 is today. Applicant, please.
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Mark Johnson. My address is 11440 West Center Road, appearing today on behalf of the applicant, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed? Roll call.
Row.
Yes.
Begley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Items 11 through 15 can be considered together for Sundance located northwest of 195th Street and HWS Cleveland Boulevard. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval based on communication and opposition. Item 11 in ordinance to rezone this property from AG District to MU District. Item 12 in ordinance to approve a major amendment to mixed-use district development agreement. Items 13 and 14 are resolutions to approve the revised preliminary plat and final plat. Item 15, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items number 11 through 15 are today. We'll first hear from the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, my name is Mark Johnson. My address is 11440 West Center Road. I'm appearing today on behalf of the applicant, Timberland Partners LLC. And with me today are Ryan Seiler from Timberland Partners, Colin Cosse from Cosse Wilson. They're the architects for the project, as well as Caleb Snyder from Lamprey Neerson. They're the civil engineers for the project. So, let's see, I hope I got this thing right here. So the site, as it exists today, is a 29.75-acre site, just located just south of Dodge in between 198th, approximately, and 195th Street, and just north of the Fire Ridge Elementary School in Elkhorn. The property is currently Zoned AG, but is located within an existing mixed-use development agreement area, the Avenue One Development. So what is before you today is the request for rezoning from AG to MU, along with the mixed-use development agreement amendment, as well as a revised preliminary plat, the final plat, and subdivision agreement. So, here's the plat. Get that zoomed out, maybe. How do I do that?
Yep.
That's the other way. So as you can see, as I mentioned before, the entire site is 29.75 acres, give or take in size. The four billable lots on which the project that we'll be discussing today are a combination of 22 acres in size. The remaining seven and three-quarters acres of property will be plotted as outlots, which will be either drainage ways or wetland mitigation areas to be owned and maintained by either the current property owner or a future landowners, excuse me, Land Owners Association. So on those four lots, we will construct, the applicant's proposing to construct 251 units within 21 two-story townhome-style buildings. Each building will have between eight and 16 units. So there'll be a total of 115 one-bedroom units, 112 two-bedroom units, and 24 three-bedroom units. I don't know if you can blow this up, but I can give a, some of the amenities that will be constructed as part of the development that we just wanted to highlight are this large green space here in the center with an outdoor space, an outdoor pool, a clubhouse and a game room located down here, along with a 24-hour fitness center for the residents. So here's a conceptual rendering of what the buildings will look like. As you can see, the buildings will have four-sided architecture such that each side of the building is treated as the front, so you'll have equal amounts of detail expression and material on each side. There'll be no rear of the building. Put up an elevation here. This is a sample of the 16-unit building. So something to point out here is each of the units will have their own front door entrance. You can, I won't count the doors for you, but you can see that the six, there's six doors on the front, six doors on the back, and two on each of the sides. So each unit will have their own front door entrance, and most of the units will have their own garage and driveway as well. Just a little bit about, well, where's my final plat? A little bit about traffic, because I know that's going to be a topic of conversation today. As you can see on the final plat, the connections to the adjacent public streets, Chicago Street here in the northwest corner of the property, as well as 197th Street via Burke Street in the southwest corner of the property, those connections are shown to be made pursuant to the city requirements. Those requirements, as I understand, are not unique to this development, but apply throughout the city. But, so they are shown, they are shown here. And we know from our neighborhood meetings and multiple conversations with the neighbors over the course of the last three or four months, and some opposition materials filed in connection with this, that there is some concern with connecting this neighborhood to 197th Street. And while Timberland understands the concerns raised with respect to making that connection, Timberland supports the city's policy for connectivity in this case. We believe that by fully connecting our development with the adjacent public streets, that will allow for a much more efficient street system that will benefit not only our development, but the neighboring developments as well. Now, having said all of that, we still believe that practically speaking, I'm going to put this aerial up again, practically speaking, most of the traffic that comes in and out of our development will come from the east and leave to the east along utilized HWS Cleveland Boulevard to get to 192nd, which has just obviously been recently improved, and then head up north to Dodge or south. And lastly, before I wrap up, I just want to note, we have had a virtual neighborhood meeting on April 27th, as well as a follow-up in-person neighborhood meeting in June. Those meetings were well-attended. We had good dialogue at those meetings and correspondence following each of those meetings as well. And I just want to say on behalf of Timberland, we appreciate all of those who attended those meetings, provided feedback, the neighbors and the staff. You know, these projects aren't easy, and we work through things, and we appreciate all the dialogue and all the time and energy that everyone's put into this so far. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And I think there's some opposition here today, so I'll give you a chance to rebut if you'd like, following that. But first, I'll take any other proponents in the room today.
Hi, I'm Julie Harris with BikeWalk Nebraska, 1905 Harney Street. I just wanted to come up and talk about the importance of the connectivity that was discussed with the plat and with these plans. It's extremely important, especially out in our suburban areas, that we maintain the street connectivity through our neighborhoods, especially with there being an elementary school right there, south of the proposed development area, and lots of kids that will be needing to hopefully walk to school. Being able to have that direct connectivity to the school is very crucial, as opposed to having to go out and around and down and all the way back around to walk. We know that will decrease the amount of traffic coming through the neighborhood if we can get more kids walking to that school, but the only way we will do that is to provide more direct connectivity. So I do encourage you to stick to the master plan, to stick to the studies and all the information that has been provided. It's a good plan, and that connectivity is super important. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents in the room today?
Lee Myers, 105 South 9th Street, number 603, speaking for myself and Mode Shift Omaha. If it's a complete street, it serves all users, all citizens. And the only way it can be a complete street in this situation is if there's connections outside so that people can walk, people can bike, and people can get around without having to go out to the arterials. If they wish a private street, they could petition to have the city sell it to them, and then they could maintain the pavement and maintain the snow themselves. But in this case, it all comes to you balancing public and private. But I don't see any reason why that should be a private street servicing only those residents there when it's a public street, public access. It's kind of the opposite of the Farnham Street, where you have the street now controlled by all the people who want to drive through, and the neighborhood doesn't. Well, you, the tough ones end up in your hands, and you have a perfect balance here of looking at the public interest and looking at their private interests, and I urge you to go with complete streets.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none. We do have a proponent by Zoom, Jennifer Dan Shukuk. I'll get you unmuted here in a minute. There you go.
Okay. Mr. President and members of the council, thank you for letting me speak this afternoon. I reside at 127 South 201st Street, Omaha, and I am testifying today in favor of the Sundance development, as well as in support of the road connections. In addition to being a resident of this area, I have some unique qualifications that I would like to express as it relates to this project. I am a professional planner with 30 years of experience. I understand traffic studies, subdivisions, traffic circulation, and development dynamics. I also understand what it is to live next door to an elementary school. I lived five houses down from an elementary school for 19 years. I had school traffic parked in front of my house on a daily basis, and on several occasions, I even had people park in my driveway, get out of their cars, and leave to go to the school. So I do have some sympathy. The connections from the proposed development to Chicago Street and 197th Street are critical for overall traffic flow and circulation. If 197th Street is not connected, the only way in and out of the proposed Sundance development would be via Burke Street and Chicago Street. If Chicago Street is also not connected, there would only be one way into the development, which causes serious concern for emergency access to townhouses. The connections not only provide emergency access, but they also provide better circulation throughout the neighborhood. The lack of connections would exceed the 600-foot block length that is required by the Omaha Municipal Code. Block lengths are established to facilitate pedestrian and vehicular circulation. I would suggest that establishing the connection at 197th Street would reduce the overall traffic impacts on that street, as the traffic could circulate out instead of going up, turning around, and coming back down the street as it currently exists. As one of the previous speakers mentioned, street connections are necessary to facilitate pedestrian circulation to the school. The streets in the area are 25 feet wide, and those are designed to reduce speeds in the area. Sidewalks are provided so they enhance the idea of complete streets. But to truly have complete streets, those connections are necessary. The connections, the city code prohibits cul-de-sac unless the topography is such that they are unnecessary. 197th Street and Chicago Street turnarounds should both be connected. There are no topographical reasons not to connect them. In both of those locations, the existing turnarounds were intended to be temporary. They are easements that are located on private property, not in the right-of-way. The temporary turnaround on Chicago Street is in the front yard of individuals residing at 19820 and 19821. The temporary turnaround at 105 South 197th Street is an easement that is wholly within the front yard of that property. Again, those turnarounds are easements that are located on private property. They were established to facilitate temporary traffic movements until the adjacent property was developed. The property owners at those locations are maintaining property that is being used currently by the public. If you have the opportunity to look at the Fire Ridge Estates and the Elk Valley Plats, you will be able to see the easements and understand that they were only intended to be a temporary solution. I've reviewed the traffic study that was submitted with the last development proposal. That development was approved with the connections to both 197th and Chicago Street in place. The traffic study was conducted to evaluate the improvements necessary to mitigate the increased traffic that would be on the surrounding network due to the proposed development. The recommended improvements focused on addition of lanes to 192nd Street, signalization of intersections, a zigzag pedestrian crossing at 192nd Street, and the addition of stop signs. I have found nothing in the study to indicate that the traffic volume would increase by one car per minute in the vicinity of the school or 197th Street. The traffic study assumed that there would be 502 senior apartments on this site. Senior apartments are typically reserved for those who are 55 and over. A majority of the 55 and over population does continue to drive. Many do still have children residing at home. The current proposal is half of that. It's for 251 units, so it stands to reason that this would reduce the general amount of traffic in this vicinity from the previous proposal. Additionally, I would argue... Additionally, I would argue that the number of elderly individuals whose driving skills may create a risk to schoolchildren have also been reduced. In sum, the street connections provide alternate routes that reduce overall traffic on Farnham Street and on HWS Cleveland. The street connections will actually enhance the safety of pedestrians and children in the area. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We'll now move to opponents.
Thank you, councilmembers. My name is Lindsay Schuler. I'm an attorney with Croker Huck Law Firm, and I represent Fire Ridge residents Sheila Cole, Barry and Mary Gray here, Mike and Angie Nixon, Brent and Tracy Pounder, Jeremy and Nicole Seer, Pat and Lee Sitnow, Dave and Suzanne Welty, Todd and Missy Willenborg. Our office location is 2120 South 72nd Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm here today to discuss the final plat and preliminary plat for Sundance that includes a cut-through of 197th Street, as we've been discussing. Right now, the revised and final plat do include 197th Street cut-through in this new subdivision, which creates a dangerous situation to schoolchildren around the elementary school. We are here today to expressly oppose the resolution to approve the revised and final plat, specifically to remove the cut-through of 197th Street into the Sundance addition. The specific location of 197th Street next to Fire Ridge Elementary School presents a unique situation where there are added concerns for children near the school. We have already heard from several proponents indicating that their desire for walkability and bikeability into the community is their primary concern. That can be arranged through sidewalks that allow connectivity into the community, as well as bike paths that surround not only the school, but the Sundance community into Fire Ridge. This particular space for development has come before the planning board before, and the Omaha City Council on two prior occasions. Specifically, in relation to this, in October of 2013, the Gateway Business Park that include a high-density area was planned, and since 2013, the community members have followed the development projects and engaged in discussions with the developers, as mentioned by Mr. Johnson. They want to continue the economic progress while maintaining their safe community. Specifically, in 2013, the city council previously addressed whether to include 197th Street cut-through at the Gateway Park development. Community members came forward. They cited their concerns for high-traffic volumes near the elementary school, and amendments were proposed, and the final plan was to remove the cut-through and add walking and bike paths to connect 197th Street. This was previously approved by the city council. The primary concern for Fire Ridge community members is to preserve a safe environment for elementary school children near Fire Ridge Elementary. 197th is the adjacent street to Fire Ridge Elementary School. As the closest street to the elementary, it sees a higher volume of child pedestrian traffic than any other of the surrounding streets. Proceeding with a cut-through of 197th Street without first planning for the increased traffic volume will be a serious safety concern, because 197th Street is a primary pickup location where parents park on either side of the street, and children can often be seen darting in and out of the traffic when they leave school. Sundance and Avenue One are advertised as high-density developments. The 251 townhomes at Sundance and the over 1,000 apartment units scheduled for Avenue One will increase the student enrollment at Fire Ridge Elementary School and add to the volume of traffic in the area during school times. Adding the cut-through on 197th Street creates a dangerous situation for the elementary schoolchildren, as the traffic, as through traffic will increase the amount of vehicles on the street during drop-off and pickup times. As mentioned previously, there was a traffic study that was conducted regarding 192nd Street, but not specific to the area of 197th. The last traffic study conducted took place in 2016. It used traffic volumes from 2012 and 2014. Significant expansion has incurred in this area since, and even in the last five years, such that the only available, the only available study has become obsolete with its current numbers. Due to the specific location of 197th Street, right next to Fire Ridge Elementary School, warrants an ounce of prevention to prevent child injury. Deletion of the 197th Street cut-through to preserve the safety around the elementary school will not impede traffic in the Sundance community or overly-taxed surrounding areas. The expansion of Chicago and HWS Cleveland and Farnham Streets, along with the private internal streets of the Sundance development, provides sufficient access in and out of the community to 192nd, 204th, and West Dodge Road. There is sufficient access both to the, both to the north and to the west that includes major thoroughfares that would filter traffic in and out of there very easily. 197th Street is very specific in that it provides a unique situation, because it becomes a T-intersection at Farnham Street. So residents are required to take another route, either east or west, in order to get to another major thoroughfare. Removal of the cut-through will not prohibit the Sundance development or the numbers of apartment buildings. As far as the economic development of Sundance community, it will continue. However, there is a concern that if the 197th Street is cut-through, the planned high-density Sundance and Avenue One communities will lead to an increased injuries of child pedestrians around the school and necessitate the way for one-way streets and severe parking limitations. Neighboring elementary schools, as will be mentioned by Angie Nixon, also include, in their drop-off and pickup areas, severe restrictions regarding times that you can travel up and down the road, where you can park, and many of the streets in the surrounding area became one-way streets. In closing, in 2013, the same community members you see before you petitioned the city council for the same thing that they are seeking today, to stop the cut-through of 197th Street. The city council, at that time, recognized the importance of putting child safety first, and voted for an amendment to remove the cut-through of 197th Street. We are here today to ask that you two see the unique situation that 197th Street presents, and the value of the former city council members' decisions, and vote to remove the 197th Street cut-through, so that we can preserve the safety around Fire Ridge Elementary School. Thank you for your time, consideration, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other opponents today?
Hello, I'm Angie Nixon from 104 South 197th Street in Fire Ridge. May I approach, though? Councilman, I have some thank-yous to give here. First of all, as I mentioned to Don when we met, and do you remember that kid in class that always asked a million questions and was kind of annoying? That's pretty much how I've been to the city, and I apologize for the past few months. I've asked a lot of questions to get the information that I needed. So I wanted to have, give special thank-yous to anyone and everyone who has listened to me and answered my questions about this street issue the past three months. I'd like to thank former Councilman Thompson for all he did for our community. I'd like to thank Councilmen Festerson and Melton for their previous support and meeting with me. Councilman Rowe for his time meeting with us. Councilman Harding for his several times meeting with us and dealing with my tech issues. Councilman, or I'm sorry, excuse me, Dave Fanslaw and his planning crew, who has answered many a question. Parks and Rec and Public Works Department. Ryan, Caleb, and Mark for meeting with us and flying from Minnesota to come meet with us to answer questions. Principal Deb at Fire Ridge Elementary, Dr. Habrock, who has been instrumental in helping our community be safe. He had police officers come on the weekends. We had an issue with, in our school parking lot, with kids doing nefarious things, and he got police there on the weekends, coverage temporarily, to help with that, which we very much appreciated, that he looks out for our community and our kids. And to Ryan Linkwist as well, from the school. I'd like to thank our Fire Ridge community, the HOA, and Casey Klein, one wonderful woman on Harney Street who has helped us, my family and street family for putting up with me and unwavering support through this. Councilman, this is what I call a very unique situation. I call it a perfect storm.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we have somebody's phone going off in the audience, and that's going to have to turn off or be taken out of the chambers. All right. Thanks. Sorry, Angie.
That's okay. You have a, the perfect storm is you have a senior living development that has gone to townhomes, which affects things greatly. You have a development that is part of a mixed-use agreement like no other ever built in West Omaha, according to the support letter. It's going to be an urban area now, instead of a suburban area. Very significant change to our area and our community. Avenue One and Sundance combined will be high-density, and basically, they refer to it as a new West Omaha downtown in advertising. And due to an inability to build any, any of it north of Dodge, it is all going next to our Fire Ridge Elementary School and epicenter of our neighborhood, the clubhouse, pool, and Fire Ridge. The Sundance Development has two access points without the access point at 197th, which, if I look at Ravello and Whispering Ridge Apartments, they also have one to two access points, so it's very comparable without the 197th connection as far as access for police and fire. We aren't a good access point, since we are right next to this school, so we will become most likely a one-way street for, at Spring Ridge, it's four hours per day, which is half a day. So that kind of shoots the connectivity when you have to have a one-way street, and that would be for five days a week, and that would be during the most desired time for connectivity, school hours. Spring Ridge has the one-way. They also have a no-left-turn by their school, so that also decreases the connectivity. It's very difficult and very unsafe to increase traffic volume and speed, not only in a residential area, but especially next to an elementary school, especially when you have parked cars along that street five days a week. That is a line-of-sight danger for the drivers going down that street and for the children. So the three things combined is a triple whammy, as far as child pedestrian injury is concerned, and that's supported by the American Academy of Pediatrics and SafeKids.org. I spoke with two people this past week who live next to schools, and their streets are opened up. One said she wishes there were speed bumps, which clearly shows that she does not like the speed that people go down her street next to the school. They get parked cars on both sides at times, too, just like we do, and they're open, their streets are open. One mentioned she had traffic calming and, like, traffic circles and trees, and she said it's not enough. Opening up by a school means excessive sign restrictions, which, from what I have read in my research, is a sign of ill-planning. There's nearly 50 traffic restriction signs around Spring Ridge, as well as higher traffic volumes and speed, which statistics show creates a higher risk for child pedestrian injury, especially with parked cars. If you could please imagine with me for a minute, I don't mean to be extreme here, this really happens, and it's very common with a child pedestrian injury for kids to get PTSD. This is not something that heals right after the physical injuries are over. It can continue for years. So imagine your favorite five-to-nine-year-old boy, typically who gets hit. He could be your child, a nephew. Imagine him walking home from school on a nice day, darting between these cars and getting hit. Then imagine the panic attacks until he can't breathe. Imagine the irrational fears. Imagine the therapy for years. Imagine the tears and the fright, and the replaying of that incident over and over in his mind. This may sound extreme, but it happens, and it's a real thing, and it affects that kid for the rest of his life. I've been through this with my own daughter, having a motor vehicle injury. I don't know where to put this. Do you see this? Okay. Thank you. That's what she looked like the day of the motor vehicle injury, and that look has come back several times. I do not want to see that on my street with another kid ever again. It has not been fun. The American Academy of Pediatrics says residential areas are supposed to foster low volumes and low speed, especially by a school. There are five other north and south connections right next to 197th Street, five, for cars to filter through, that go the same distance. One goes all the way to Pacific, HWS Cleveland Boulevard. It was meant for a higher volume of traffic. The other four streets, there's four of them. I have petition signatures from people on all the streets that are connecting into Fire Ridge and Elk Valley. I have 400 petition signatures. We went and did another petition again this year, just like we did in 2013, and it is, I did a file for each of you, so you can see the petition signatures. There had been somebody that had mentioned on our street some current congestion issues and things of that nature. She was writing that letter in support of not cutting 197th Street. She also signed the petition to not cut 197th Street, and she understands that her issues can be solved with what the American Academy of Pediatrics recommends is police enforcement around a school. At all the schools that I've studied this past six months, that is something that is a need. There needs to be more police enforcement around these schools for the traffic laws. There's congestion around every school. There's broken traffic laws around every school. If we want that to get better, we need to have better police enforcement around the schools at pickup time. Her letter is in there as well, so she just wanted to make sure you guys understood that she and everyone on our street is for our street not getting cut, as well as 400 other As far as the one car per minute, that was not from a traffic study. That was a figure that we were given at the neighborhood meeting from Jeff Resleman. He had done, looked at the traffic generator manual, and he looked at the number of houses on our street and the number of Sundance units. I need to remind you that the number of Sundance units could change. We've had this project changed four times. There is no guarantee that it's going to be 251 townhomes. You can have an unlimited amount of units there. There is no guarantee that that is what is going in there. If there's anything I've learned, I've learned that. So double trips, people have mentioned, well, you get double the traffic if you don't put it through. There's only about, because we are a short street, there's only about 10 to 12 cars that can fit, a park on the side of the street. So that's like, you know, 20 to 24 trips. That is a far cry from 1,200 trips per day extra. So it's not really a concern of ours that those cars are, you know, turning back around and coming down, because it's literally 20 to 24 trips only. As far as access for police and fire, as I said previously, they have, Sundance has it. They have two access points. We have had plenty of access for over a decade now for police and fire. I spoke with a gal from the Southwest Precinct, and she said the police and fire expedite as needed, and they prioritize calls as needed. And that is what they have done for our street for, over the decade that we've lived there. As far as not, it not being fair to overburden streets next to us, I want to remind you, we have five other streets that go north and south. There's two access points without our connection. Those five streets do not, they are not right next to the elementary school, and they do not. do not have parked cars five days a week of parents picking up kids. Traffic volumes. The Institute of Transportation Engineers recommends in their book Guidelines for Subdivision Streets, 100 to 1,500 average daily trips. Jeff Resleman said one car per minute, which is 1,200 trips per day, that's for a residential subdivision street. That's not next to a school even. So we're up there on the volume, and we're not even referencing the school, or taking into account that there's a school right there. So, plus there was no traffic study done next to that school, to see what the impact really is truly going to be around the school. As far as congestion on 192nd Street, that is expected because a hawk signal is required, which means that they expect 20 or more pedestrians across that 192nd Street per hour. And that was in the traffic study. That would push, that would lead you to believe that there might be congestion on 192nd Street of traffic, which would push cars into our neighborhood. Also, the infrastructure is nowhere near done on 192nd Street as recommended by that 2016 traffic study. That could also push cars into our neighborhood. We need to protect these kids, and we need to protect them where they're at the most, and where there's a triple whammy of dangers right next to that school. I think that's it. I've probably gone over time, I apologize. I just want to show you this real quick and then... Thank you. So here you see... The connection to Chicago Street. Here you see the connection to HWS here for Sundance. That's their two access points. Here you see HWS Cleveland where they're cutting through our street, or cutting through our neighborhood. They're also cutting through at Farnham, and they're cutting through at Harney eventually as well with the short street. So Chicago, HWS Cleveland, Farnham, and Harney will be all eventually cut through to the neighborhood. 192nd Street here is the street that still needs infrastructure as recommended by the traffic study done in 2016 by Olson and Associates. It needs it from Harney to Pacific. The city funds will be paying for that, not Jasper Stone. And state funds will be paying for the 192nd and Dodge huge interchange, billion-dollar interchange. That is scheduled for, or that's expected or should be done in 2024, but of course a lot of things could hold that project up. And as city funds allow, I don't think the Harney to Pacific is in the CIP yet. You'd have to double-check, but I'm pretty sure that's not in the CIP yet. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Thanks, I think we may. But first we'll keep moving to other opponents, if others in the audience want to speak today. Any other opponents? Come on down.
To fill the time, I'll tell a little story, which is Councilman Bagley and I were in the elevator this afternoon, coming back up to the meeting, and we saw a couple citizens. And they said, you know, "I see you guys are heading to your meeting." And we said, "Yes, do you have any advice for us?" And they said, "Yes, just be nice to people." I said, "That's great advice." So I said, "It's nice to see you guys being nice to each other and being courteous, and we appreciate it."
I'm a proponent. Alright, then I need to go first.
That's fine, that's totally fine.
I'm sorry Pete, but I can't hear you again.
You're an opponent, right Larry?
First of all, I'm against in general.
Okay, and your address Larry?
I'm an opponent. Name is Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue. I want to explain why I'm always an opponent. It might get a little bit off the topic of this particular thing, but first of all, has there been a rule change? Because I didn't hear you say how much time we have.
There's no rule change, but you have to stay, keep your comments to this item.
I didn't see a copy of the rules on the table either. Seems to me, I remember rules saying five minutes. Presenter's get to go first, proponents next, opponents after that, and then the presenter, proponents get to come back again. It runs together with rules from the morning, but TIF in general is not explained well enough.
So there's no TIF on this project Larry?
City's participation implies to me that I'm participating in that. $310,000.
This is not a TIF, you're on the wrong TIF item.
What item are we on ma'am?
There's no TIF on this project.
We're on items 11 through 15.
What item are we on?
11 through 15.
I'm looking at 16, it says city's participation.
We're not there yet.
That'll be next, so you can come up after on that item. Are there any other opponents on 11 through 15?
Hey, look, they're on 11 through 15.
Please.
They're not on 16 yet.
Sorry.
Members of the council, I guess I'll ask for permission as a proponent to speak at this time.
I'll call you back up then if you are a proponent. Did you miss the public hearing to start? Okay, let's finish opponents however. Are there any other opponents in the audience on items 11 through 15? Seeing none, I want to first recognize Mr. Johnson to come back up as the applicant, if he has anything he wants to rebut, and then I'll recognize one more proponent after
Mark Johnson, 11440 West Center Road. I guess the only specific thing that I would, I guess, address here is the contention that the number of units could change unilaterally. I mean, if, first of all, there's zero plan to do that, our plan for our 22 acres or 20 acres is to build the 251 units. If we were to somehow change that plan between now and construction, that would trigger an amendment to the mixed-use development agreement again, which would require your approval. So we can't just add units willy-nilly. We've got to get your approval for that. So that's the one clarification I would add, and I'm here to answer any follow-up questions.
Appreciate that, thank you. And now one last proponent before we close the public hearing, and then recognize council members for any questions.
Members of the council, thank you for allowing me this chance to speak. My name's Mark Sturzma, M-A-R-K-S-T-U-R-S-M-A, 13829 Arbor Street, 68144. And I'm here representing the Active Living Advisory Committee. I hope you received our letter of support for this project. And really, I just want to speak very briefly about street connectivity and how we believe that is a benefit to pedestrian safety, especially in an area around a school. And then personally, as my day job, in my day job as a city planner, again, a proponent for street connectivity. One of my frustrations as a resident of the city of Omaha is when there's a lack of street connectivity. It's been too many times when there has not been street connections or pedestrian connections to services, to businesses, to civic uses. I know that's the case in my neighborhood, and I would equate it to letting public opinion decide where water mains should go and create a neighborhood that has low water pressure because somebody didn't want a water line near their property. Everybody else suffers. So I'm sympathetic to the situation where you have a street that is essentially dead end for a period of time, but the plan was it for to go through. And again, we think that this is a matter of public safety and a matter of pedestrian connectivity, and that it's good for the whole neighborhood, it's good for the school if that street does go through as planned. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'll close the public hearing now. Ms. Milton, you're recognized.
Oh, thank you. And Mr. Fansley, I believe that at 10:30 you had brought up that you had done some video, or that there was a drone. I was wondering if you would be able to show that, because we're hearing about all this traffic, and I really like to see it. And I heard this morning that you went out and did that.
Dave Fansley, City Planning. Try to open this up. So I didn't shoot the video.
Well, like...
Just to be clear.
You're somebody in your department.
So we've, we've obviously been very familiar with this site for a number of years, and for a number of years we've heard how dangerous and congested the traffic is. So we thought it'd be a good idea to go take a look. So over the last couple of weeks, at least, two of the people who work for me went out in their cars, sat in the traffic, reported back that they didn't think it was so bad. But, you know, when you're in your car, you can only see where you're parked, and you don't want to really drive around that much. So what we did is we contacted Douglas County GIS and asked them to fly drone video of the school traffic. We want to understand it too, right? We want to make the best decisions we can. So part of it was, let's see what's really happening out there. So I have four videos. They're about 15 minutes total. I don't plan on showing all 15 minutes unless you all would like to sit through that, but I can show bits and pieces of each video, and I have some notes to go with it. So the first one... So what you're seeing, I don't have a pointer, but what you're seeing is obviously this is looking northeast. There's the school. Farnham Street is on the bottom, cars parked.
And actually, the cursor does work on the screen.
Perfect, there you go. I'm never down here, so. There's the school, here's Farnham Street. This is before school lets out. So I think, I think school lets out about 3:05 or something like that. So this is 197th Street. I think that's the street we're hearing the most about. As you can see right now, before school lets out, there's three cars. No doubt that there's cars lining up on Farnham Street, but I guess what I'd like to point out is it's, they're being pretty respectful. They're parked, they're not blocking driveways, nobody's moving. I think if, as you look through all these videos, I've looked at them a couple times, what I have seen is the traffic's pretty slow, people are respectful, driving pretty slow. I'm going to go back, like I said, I noticed this delivery truck. I think it's FedEx, I can't tell, but it'll stop at a couple houses. And up this 197th Street, so it stops at a couple houses. Obviously, the only exit for that street, that truck, is to turn around, and it eventually does, and it comes back south on 197. So this first video is, again, school's not out, the school traffic's really not moving. So you'll see that truck, let me see if I get these notes, at about 2:45. There comes the truck. It has no option except to go to the south and exit. And this will become, maybe it doesn't seem like a big deal now, but you'll see video of when school lets out, it's going right across, right past the crosswalk where all those kids are coming. And we've heard a lot about child safety. We all, most of us have kids, they all went to school, we're very concerned about that too, but we don't think those return trips back across that crosswalk where those kids are coming from after school is a very good idea. At somewhere in here, you got a truck leaving a house here, pulling a trailer, looks like some kind of construction maybe was going on. Again, it's going to come. None of these cars turn left to go east, they all turn right. They all turn right to go west, they don't come into the, into the school traffic. So we've got a couple examples of that. There's another truck that follows this one shortly after this truck with the trailer comes through, it comes from this house here. So we're kind of focused on this area, but notice the drive that goes into the school, and there's a whole nother parking lot up here that has its own function. They all operate pretty much the same. We think very calm, respectful parking with minimal conflicts. So that was before school was out. This one, school hasn't left out, hasn't let out yet, but as you notice, now we have six cars. I think that's six, yeah. There's six cars on 197th. So in our experience, again, we flew this video, I think, last Tuesday or Wednesday. Before that, a couple staff members were out there. We never experienced 197th Street double parked with kids running all over the place. That wasn't our experience. And that video, this video shows that. So at about two... So this video goes, these are all seven-minute videos, these first two. About here, you can see kids starting leaving school, okay? And soon you'll see, I'll try to advance, you'll see the cars pulling forward. Eventually, you'll see kids crossing the walk here. So this video is about, about the same. There's not much happening here except the traffic starts to move. It's the last two videos, I think, that are important, are most important. Again, we still got six cars. This video's about four and a half minutes long, we had to break it up because it's such a large file. At the 25-second mark, so we're coming up, one of these cars is going to leave. What you'll notice about, and we don't have to sit there and watch all these, but these six cars, they go up halfway up the street, and they turn around somebody's driveway, and they come back south. And I want to, I do want you to see... Again, notice the traffic along Farnham Street, going pretty smooth, pretty respectful. Comes a car down 197th Street, and right here is a whole bunch of kids crossing the street. That happens time and time again. So these kids stop, I assume there's a safety patrol there, but it's still a conflict point. And I'm not the traffic engineer in the room, but I guarantee you, the folks in Public Works would tell you, and I know this, that you put cars and kids together, it's not a good thing, right? So every time somebody comes down this street, where these kids have to cross is probably not the best thing for those kids. So this happens a couple times, these cars eventually filter out and leave. This one left, there's one coming right here, this white one coming down the street now. About another minute, another car turns into the driveway, one car goes all the way up, comes back down. You get the pattern, right? And they're all coming back to this point where the kids are crossing. The last video, they reset here. This is about a five-minute, this is about five minutes long. If we would watch the end of the last video, all those cars except for one left, we must have missed that last car leaving when we, when they switched the camera around. But there are no cars left on 197th Street. There are very few cars here in the northeast parking lot. There's a few stragglers here. And the other video showed a lot of kids crossing here, crossing here, walking. So they're using, the kids are being respectful, they're using the sidewalks, they're being safe, they're crossing at, at the painted crosswalks. Up here on Farnham Street, kids walk and you can see cars pull out, so we're assuming. In fact, one of the videos shows a little further east on Farnham Street that kids are getting into cars and they're coming out. I think it's important to note that from when we, when, from when school started to this, is about seven and a half minutes. So no doubt the cars line up early, because we've all done it. We've all gone to school to pick up our kids and got there 15, 20 minutes early and sat. But at most, when the traffic starts to move and the kids come out, it's about seven or eight minutes, and it's cleared out. At least today, the day that we shot this video. So we saw school traffic, we saw delivery vehicles, we saw, I think, I think one of those cars that came south was somebody who probably lives there. We think the connectivity is important, we've had this conversation many times. You know, this, this video didn't show, obviously, snowplows that have to turn around and come back, didn't show garbage trucks, trucks. It did show one delivery vehicle. And again, anytime you have that vehicle and pedestrian conflict, it's usually doesn't work well for the pedestrians. So we talked about connectivity. We have more information, we provided, I think, all of you, but for sure, the three people, the three council members who sit on our planning committee, the way we developed the city, we have a map that shows all of the stub streets. And I think every street that is connected in our city was probably once a stub street, because we don't, I'll use a square mile as an example. We don't build a square mile at a time, but what we do is we build portions of that square mile in this example. And every time a phase of a development gets done, it has a stub street because it's supposed to, it's meant to connect to the other internal streets. We've had conversations about why the internal connectivity is important, it's slower speeds, less vehicle-to-vehicle contact points, and if there are, they're usually going at slower speeds, so it's safer. If you push people out to the arterials, higher speeds, higher likelihood of if there is an accident, somebody's getting hurt. Our master plan talks about emissions, so the shorter the trip, the better the air quality. One thing in particular about Sundance, and we stopped it, well, I won't stop it, I'll let it run, about Sundance... let it run, about Sundance is any, if, if, if and when kids live in the Sundance area and they have to be driven to school, they will have, most likely, they will have to go east out onto the boulevard, which, again, is a higher traffic street. So we believe in the connectivity. The connectivity is always meant to be there. I understand that people have lived there for a decade or two. It's, it's named 197th Street. It's not 197th Circle. If we had to do it all over again, and actually, we do, we don't build those temporary stub streets like this one. We hammerhead them. We don't put, which means it's just like a T, a short T intersection so people can get up and turn around. We don't build those temporary cul-de-sacs anymore because it, it might give people the false sense that this is going to be a circle. It's always going to be a circle. So we actually sign streets now that say, you know, it's, it's going to be temporary. So we talk about connectivity all the time. There are hundreds of stub streets currently in our jurisdiction now that we hope will be connected in the future. It, it's a better transportation system. It's a better way to plan a city. And, and that's just the policy that the City of Omaha has had for decades. So I, I guess I'm here to answer any questions if you have anything specific about the Sundance development itself, but I wanted to have that opportunity to talk about connectivity.
And so I just, I just have one question. And you know, I've, I've struggled with this one when it was going to be Gateway Park. I thought that that was so wholly different that we could separate that from the residential community, you know, because it was going to be a large business park. And so I am one of those council members that have been here since the 13 vote.
Yes.
So I remember that. Now we have, it's more residential. And when I looked at, and I have to say, you know, because I, I voted to keep it from connecting at that time and just have the bike.
Sure.
And I know we've been having discussions like this now for the last eight years.
We have.
So you have, you have influenced me a little, especially on safety. Because, I agree, safety of the citizens should be our number one goal. And I guess it, when I saw the video and when I watched the drones and I see the number of cars that are going up and coming back, had they just been able to keep going straight, we would have had less traffic at that crosswalk at 197th, where at Farnham, going parallel to Farnham. So I guess that's where I'm coming down to. I want the people that are parked on that street to be able to keep going straight.
To the north?
Yeah.
Correct.
I want him to, yeah, I want him to, as opposed to turning around. And then even the FedEx truck. FedEx truck can go up the street and then keep on going, not turn around and come back down. And I know those, those drivers want to avoid children.
Snowplows. I mean, we have, correct.
At those sections. So they will keep going.
And we have data that, you know, for snow plowing, it takes, and again, I'm not the traffic engineer, Todd's here if he wants to opine on this or Ryan, but it takes a lot longer to plow a, a, a circle, a cul-de-sac street than it does straight. So yeah, snowplow should be able to make one pass and not have to come back down, clear the circle out, all that good stuff. You mentioned 2013. We obviously, both the Planning Department, the Public Works Department supported the connection because you can look all over town and see residential neighborhoods connected to office parks, commercial business districts. Because if you, if you don't have that connection, then the people who live right next to that office park who might want to work there, or that commercial center who might want to shop there, they're forced to go out, probably on the quarter-mile grid street within that quarter mile, out to the arterial. And in this case, back north, just to get to the office park or the commercial. So back in 2013, which is, again, higher speeds, traffic lights, more prone to accidents. And if they happen, they're usually a lot more hurtful than if you get in the fender bender on a, on a residential street. So yeah, back in 2013, we, we recommended to Planning Board and City Council that the connection be made for a lot of reasons. I hear a lot about 2013. I have to take the opportunity to talk about 2017. 2017, there was, so in 2000, oh, back, 2013, there was the compromise that got rid of the street connection. Back in 2007, then in 2017, when it was senior living, the connection was made. So I don't think that should be lost in today's conversation. What's being proposed here, and I said this this morning, is the current neighborhood that is Fire Ridge is considered low-density residential. So it's single-family homes. As you all know, low-density residential can, can come in many forms. Low-density residential is basically one unit per 5,000 square feet. So that can be townhomes, that can be duplexes, it can be single-family homes. I believe the numbers for the Sundance project put the area per unit at about 5,200 square feet per unit. So it's low-density to low-density. It's no different than if it was single-family homes or if it's what's being proposed. So the land uses are exactly the same, different form, but they're exactly the same.
And so, and again, I get the connectivity. And, and again, if, you know, we do this with one, we, we do get in the position of setting precedence and then our master plan might actually kind of go out the window. And there's also stubs actually all over this neighborhood, isn't there?
There are. Do you want to see that map?
Yeah, I think we saw, there's like five, I think.
Eric's going to bring me a map because I was up there texting him. I didn't bring my map, but I can show you that map.
Oh, because I just want to call attention that we do have stubs all over here because this is the neighborhood that there's no development around the outside. And again, I'm taking this time because I, I have to let you know, Mr. Foundslaw, I've struggled with this one because I, you know, I did vote against it once and then I voted for it in 17 because it was, it was senior living. But now, and after the years of discussion I've had with you in regards to this, I'm done, I'm, you know, I, I'm trying to figure out which way to go on this one, but I saw in another map how many stubs there were. So if we decide that we're not going to connect all the stubs in the neighborhood, what is that going to do to future development in this neighborhood?
Well, if you don't connect the stub streets, then the neighborhoods aren't connected, obviously. What that does is it forces people back out onto those arterial streets for those local trips. So if you want to go visit your neighbor to the southeast, west, or north, and you can't get there because everybody lives in the cul-de-sac neighborhood, we didn't connect them, then you're making, again, you're making those longer trips. Those longer trips are usually more congested because we don't have that internal connectivity. So you're either loading up another residential street, or you're going out to the arterials to go back into the neighborhood that you just left. One important point to note about the, the network that we try to build, we've all heard that, and we've all seen throughout the city, especially in the, in our western jurisdiction, we're lagging behind in arterial street improvements. So the, the, not connecting those internal streets in that quarter-mile grid only increased the traffic, and we're not, safety aside, very important, but safety aside, it only increases those trips out on, onto those arterial streets, which then become more congested, and we keep building, and we keep building. If we can have a better connect, connected network within the quarter, within the miles, those mile grids, we're better off as a city.
Okay.
And, and so, yeah, this map shows the general, we have an entire map of the city that shows this, and they're all over, north, south, east, and west, but mostly out west because that's where we're, we're developing new subdivisions. So this is, this is, this right here is the neighborhood we're talking about. There's 190, there's 197th Street, there's Chicago Street. But you can see by the red dots, and I'm not zoomed all the way out, we have hundreds of stub streets in our jurisdiction. And if we didn't connect them, we would be failing as planners and keepers of, of how we plan our city and how we develop in the future, in my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything I haven't asked you that you, because sometimes I don't think of everything to ask because I'm not a planner. But I, I have appreciated over the years, your explanations on things where, that I struggle with. And where I say, well, is this one where we should make an exception or not make an exception? And when it comes down to safety, what is the real, what are the real safety issues? And I think that's where I'm coming from that drone video. And I just want to say that I appreciate you taking that much time and time away from people in your department to spend that many days sitting in the cars, personally viewing it, and then doing the drone video. Because I think that was the only way to give me, at least visually, what is actually going on. And it, to me, it looks like Farnham, when we saw the, the video, there were tons of cars on Farnham. But it looks like the kids are at least abiding by the traffic rules. And that's where all the traffic is, is on Farnham Street. But it didn't appear to me that people were speeding down Farnham Street, at least during the, the pickup after school.
It, it seems very calm. And what we've noticed with school traffic is during those pickup times, the people who know the school's there, they avoid it. So typically, the, the traffic around the school, when school, when, when the kids are dropped off and when they're picked up, is typically the school traffic. And parents are very aware of all the traffic, and they're very aware of the kids walking. So I think, I think the video, so just to go back to the video, I, we wanted to be informed. We thought we knew what we were talking about, right, with this one? And that video, when I saw that video, I was pleasantly surprised that it wasn't the chaos that I was led to believe over the last seven or eight years, whatever it's been. So I, I think it's, I, I think it's very important. I think it shows us exactly what's going on in that neighborhood. And, you know, you're probably going to see more video from us in the future on these cases. We, we're going to really start using that technology because it captures what's going on out there as opposed to what looks, what we're hearing or what it looks like on paper. I will say one last thing. 197th Street, I asked Todd Fitzler the other day, how much, how much do we spend on paving and putting in streets? And it's about a million dollars per lane mile, we've all heard. So I'm, now that I think of it, I probably did the math wrong, but 197th Street serves 26 lots right now. Again, it was temporary in our opinion. And I think past approvals would prove that. We wouldn't pour a temporary cul-de-sac in somebody's front yard if, if we as planners, past planning boards, and past city councils didn't think it was going to connect someday. So if you don't connect those public streets, basically what you're doing is you're privatizing taxpayer dollars for the benefit of a very few. So that street, which by my estimation is somewhere around $250,000 to $300,000 to put in, if not connected, then the only people who benefit from that investment are the 26 people who live there. And that's not how we should be spending our tax dollars. We should be connecting these streets so everybody can enjoy the streets in those neighborhoods that are supposed to be connected. So it's really privatization of a public investment if we don't connect these streets.
And I think if we were to delay it, and that came up this morning, it didn't come up this afternoon, but even if we were to delay it, if we, if somebody were to make an amendment, well, let's just wait until the other streets get done. Right now, it's the, going to be at the developer's cost that it's connected, but if we delay it, then that connection would have to be paid for by the taxpayers of Omaha.
That's my understanding. City code requires that all public improvements be put with, put in within two years of approval. So we only have two years, the developer only has two years to put all the, to, to put all the public improvements in place. And yeah, I think if we, we heard this morning is if we delay a connection for some reason, then it's, whenever that connection's made, it's probably going to be on the city's dime.
Because right now, the developer actually will pay for that public street, and then it'll become a public street.
Correct. Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Foundslaw. I, I don't have any further questions for you. I don't know if other council members do.
Thank you. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you. Before you sit down, Dave, let me ask you a couple of quick questions. I, I don't remember. Is this being done with an SID or is it, is this the part that's still, is this within the city?
It is not an SID, I believe. I'll look at Mark. Yeah.
Okay. All right. All right, that, I needed, needed that. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Yeah. So I, I know we usually give the applicant some rebuttal time too. I wanted to offer up to Lindsay and/or Angie, don't mean to lie inside you, but if, if you would come up, Lindsay, if you had a couple of comments to, to respond to.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Harding, I did. So in response to Mr. Foundslaw's videos.
Just your name and address for the record.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Lindsay Schuler with Croker Huck Law Firm, 2120 South 72nd Street.
Thanks.
In response to Mr. Foundslaw's video, I think that obviously he's showing the current condition. That's not the current concern. The current concern is the push-through of 197th Street where you have back and forth traffic down 197th, where now you have six, seven, eight trucks, cars turning around and asserting that that is a dangerous condition to kids is, does not even pale in comparison to what you would have when the street is actually cut through. As was recommended, sorry, as was referenced earlier today, the estimate for traffic through 197th Street is 1,200 cars per day. And so what you're looking at on the video is the creation of that stub street. You have less traffic even though those cars do have to turn around and kids crossing in that intersection. You're going to have significantly more traffic up and down 197th Street where those kids cross, going both directions with the street cut through. So that does not address the, the safety concern that we are bringing forth to you today. I would also like to mention that as far as the connectivity with Farnham Street, the reason no one is turning west is because of the backup in cars on Farnham Street. Cut through of 197th Street does not change that. The school is going to remain there. The, the, to address the backup on Farnham Street is through HWS Cleveland, around Chicago Street, and the other direction on Farnham. But 197th Street does not interfere with the ongoing traffic that goes to Fire Ridge Elementary School. Thank you.
Thanks, Lindsay. Yeah.
Any questions? Sorry.
No. Thank you. Okay, thanks. Angie, did, I'll ask Angie to come up too, please.
Can we turn this thing on? Sorry. I don't know if you can see this.
Your name and address for the record again, Angie.
Oh, sorry. Angie Nixon, 104 South 197th Street. This is 197th Street on a different day, different time. There's about 10 to 12 cars parked here. On, you know, to just get a snapshot of one day, that's one thing, but we live there every day. We know what it's like every day. And some days, it's calm and great, and we want to keep it that way. The traffic is low, the speed is low, the volume is low, and we love it that way. You open us up to 1,200 cars per day. You're opening us up to way more delivery trucks going to Sundance Townhomes. They will come down our street, they'll come up Farnham, they'll come down, buzz, fly down our street to deliver their packages down there. They could do it nice and slow around through Chicago, around through HWS. But if you open us up, you're opening up those kids at that crosswalk to additional UPS trucks driving in that spot. So that's just something to consider. We do, I do have two images I don't have with me of cars parked on the opposite side of the street as well. They do park on the other side, even though it says no parking. And you find that at any school. You find that at Spring Ridge. You find that anywhere. They're going to park on both sides no matter what. Now, this is our school right here. You saw Dave's video, which was nice and calm, and we want to keep it that way. Some days, it's like this, but I've never experienced this at our school. I don't know if you can see that line, but every single one of those cars is a child pedestrian danger. That's a dart-and-dash-out child pedestrian injury danger right there, every single one of those cars. You will add parked cars to our street. You will add volume of traffic, and you will add speed. And all those three things adds risk for child pedestrian injury.
Angie, I'm sorry, where was that picture taken?
That was at Spring Ridge.
Oh, at Spring, okay.
And I have several other ones. I have ones with cars parked on both sides. They line both sides back bumper to bumper. I talked to the neighbor, I don't know if you can read this, at 1411, across the street from the Spring Ridge School. She said she wishes there were speed humps, which obviously shows that people speed down the street. We have low speed on our street because it is a stub street. We want to preserve that for the kid's safety. So this is just a different perspective. I know, I appreciate all Dave's work on this and the time that he's done on this very much. So it's just, and this is the, oh, you can't see it. Do not enter. Seven to nine, two to four. Four hours a day, five days a week. You can't even go down that street. How's that for connectivity? That doesn't help connectivity much. Same street, this is Spring Ridge as well. And these are, that last one was Spring Ridge. Also at Spring Ridge. Two additional hours. You can't take a left. Two additional hours, you can't take a left. Again, not much connectivity there. Right here, American Academy of Pediatrics. Residential neighborhoods should have sidewalks and be designed to foster low traffic volume and speed. It also says, highly visible strict police enforcement of traffic regulations in school zones is extremely important. That's kind of on another note, but that's something that would be really nice. And that could be helped by having police just do spot checks, you know, special attention spot checks, maybe the first couple of weeks of school. So the parents are like, oh, maybe I shouldn't park illegally here. Just an idea. And this is my last one. There's 51,000 child pedestrian injuries per year, motor vehicle child pedestrian injuries. Children are most likely to be struck by a motor vehicle in an urban area on a residential street close to their home. This development has 1,500 apartments, 251 townhomes, it's got retail, commercial, office, a hotel, civic, and it's opening up in four different, it's all those, all of those little stubbs. They're pushing through four of them. Ours would have been the fifth one, or is the fifth one, that they would be pushing through. There's plenty of connectivity in five different spots to do the same thing that our street do, street does, without subjecting those kids to more UPS trucks up and down that street. As soon as we opened up, or you guys opened up HWS Cleveland, the guy across from the parking lot called me and said that he has construction trucks driving down his street all the time, right next to the elementary school. That's another thing to think about.
Okay, Angie, I'm-
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So I, I want to, I, I think you see Angie's passion and, and Lindsay's, Lindsay's good guidance on this, too. I must say that, you know, this is, this has been something that the neighbors have lived through, has been, has been pointed out since really, you know, about 10 years, dating back to, you know, 2013 certainly, when it, when it came to votes on, on city council and planning board, and obviously in the planning before that, so better part of 10 years. And, and I know that's, you know, it's been discussed that, well, maybe at one point this was going to be the, the south side of the bookend parks for, for Elmwood and Memorial Park and, and, you know, kind of be the gateway to, to the city from the west. And then it was the 2013 Gateway Business Park proposal, and then 2017 Avenue One, and now we find ourselves here today. And in meeting with, with, with Angie and Lindsay and others from the neighborhood, we did talk about maybe this being unique and seeing what that, you know, if, if there was a reason to make, you know, a decision that was different than maybe what the, the planning department and the planning board had recommended. And, and I, I think, I, I like the, the case that's, that's been made in, in that sense. So one of the things that, that we also discussed is, and has been kind of at least floated here today, was the ability maybe to delay the decision on putting 197th Street through until the improvements to 192nd and Dodge are completed, which was something that I was going to try to accomplish through an amendment, but through the law department, basically saying that, you know, we, if, if it's not done by the developer within the, the first two years of, of the, of the plat, of the final plat, then it's, it would be at the city's expense. And I doubt there would be any support for that kind of amendment at, at the council for something like that, to put the, the taxpayers at risk over not having that done within the next two years. So I guess what, what I'm, I'm hopeful for is that if, if this isn't approved, then, then maybe we can find another way, maybe another amendment that just takes it out of, out of here if it's not approved. So I, I want to thank Angie again, and, and Todd, and, and all the neighbors, and Lindsay for their efforts and their, and their passion, and, and I hope that their message is heard. Thank you.
Councilman Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had a couple of quick questions as well. There was some Thanksgiving in the beginning, and what people have to realize is even if we don't represent this neighborhood, we still read through everything, we still go through everything. I still watch the planning board meetings, and we hear arguments every single week, but this one's hard to overcome. You have the planning department, you have the planning board, you have Public Works. But there were some things in here, and I just needed some clarification because with me and the area I represent, I want to make sure that we're on the same page. And I don't want to call Angie Nixon out, but I think this came from you. If you could come up, I just want you to answer a question, if you would, please, in your name and address.
Angie Nixon, 104 South, 197th Street.
So going through the planning board documents, and, and don't get me wrong, we all have kids up here, we all want them to be safe, but we also care about them regardless of where they're from. And you made a comment in here where you said Ms. Nixon stated that this development will turn their children into inner-city kids, which makes them less safe. What does that mean?
What that means is from the research, and I apologize for using that term, I should have said, turning suburban kids into urban kids. From my studies, more kids, I don't know if I have that piece with me, or it's back at my chair, but kids in urban areas are at higher risk of child pedestrian injury. There's more parked cars, there's more traffic volume, and there's more speed. So because of this development that's coming right next to our elementary school, because they couldn't build any of it on the north side of Dodge, and they had to build all of it on the south side of Dodge, and there just happens to be an elementary school right there, you've now got this huge, which they're calling a West Omaha Downtown, a New West Omaha Downtown. That's what they're referring to it as. It says in the Avenue One support letter that it's a true mixed-use, high-density, urban development. And so we're going from a suburban to an urban situation, right there. And that's definitely going to affect, you know, what happens to the kids right next to that school. So that is what I meant by, you know, turning our kids into urban kids instead of, you know, right now we have low traffic volume, low speed. And so we will now be subjecting the kids to high-traffic volume, high-speed, more parked cars.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure you cared about all kids, not just your kids.
Oh, yeah, that's what I'm trying to do. I don't want to see any other kid get a motor vehicle injury. It is not fun to deal with.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. And I could go on and on about this development, but I won't, but I'll, I'll pick another piece out because that's just how I am. There's another person that says, we shouldn't allow this to happen, and I'll find it in here because of course it's many, many pages, but we shouldn't allow this to happen because those apartments will increase graffiti and crime in our neighborhood. Trust me, we sit up here for Omaha. So when I hear these things, and you hear people say those are West Omaha problems, that's kind of what I think. So I'd love to be on your side on this, but I could just pick this apart in the fact that planning and Public Works says this has to happen and connectivity as well, this is an easy decision for me. Maybe not for my colleagues, but it is for me. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights. Motion to approve. Second. Roak.
Ro.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
No.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to one. Item 16, a resolution to approve the Eastside North 18 Ohio Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located northwest of 17th and Ohio Streets in an amount up to $310,000.
Public hearing and vote on number 16 is today. We'll hear from the applicant first.
Yes, good afternoon. Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning, on behalf of the project, Tax Increment Financing Project. This is an affordable housing development being undertaken by Holy Name Housing. They've assembled about 11 vacant parcels, assembled them into one parcel or one development in the vicinity of 18th and Ohio Streets. They're going to build 13 bungalow-style homes, and they're kind of row home design, arranged in three structures. It's affordable housing because this is a Lytech-funded project, that's low-income housing tax credit, and the city is also providing $247,000 in HUD home funds to assist the project. So all the tenants of this, of the rental units, these 13 units, will need to be income-qualified households. Again, Holy Name Housing is the developer. Matthew Kavanaugh is with us today. He's the CEO of Holy Name Housing Corporation. This development represents a $4.1 million investment in the site, $4.1 million approximately. They're requesting $310,000, $310,000 in TIF support. Project meets the required criteria of our TIF program. It's an appropriate land use for the location, and it complies with the goals of the city's master plan. I've asked Mr. Kavanaugh if he would also talk a little bit about, about the affordability of the project, so he'll maybe elaborate on that for us as well.
Thank you. Mr. Kavanaugh.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you. I'm Matthew Kavanaugh, 4324 Ford Street, Executive Director of Holy Name Housing. I'm happy to answer any questions, but as Don said, he wanted me just to touch on what is affordable, answer that question. So these, as Don said, these are all low-income housing tax credit units. We'll also have some home investment partnership funds in them. That really governs the, the rate of rental for these properties. So they'll all rent to be affordable to households under 60% of the area median income. That means for these two-bedroom bungalows, they'll rent for $682 a month, starting. They're, they're restricted to seniors, and 30% will be available to folks who have physical disabilities. So that's that. I guess that 60% mark, if you're curious, in the Omaha area, that's about $37,000 a year. That would be the income level. And again, I'm happy to answer any questions.
That's $37,000 for?
For a one-person household. These will typically be occupied by single individuals. You, you might get a couple of two, two-person households, but generally it'll be a single fam, single person.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. Excuse my lack of attention earlier, but I, in general, I'm against TIF because there's too many different kinds of TIF. We have TIF that has city's participation, and we have TIF that doesn't. I'm not a lawyer, and I don't think the Open Meetings Act intent is for us to be lawyers and be able to understand how you people write, what you do. But I think, I'd bring up that tonight, there's going to be people in Fremont that are very upset with what happened with TIF out there for a chicken plant. We don't understand it here either, but when you say city's participation, because I live here, I assume that means my participation, too. We get one crack at these things. There's a reading, or a second reading, and then there's the vote. We don't get another voice. You can come in with amendments next week, and we don't get to talk on those. So what I'm suggesting here is, go ahead with this project, but you need to fully explain this to the citizens of Omaha, that they are not paying to cough up this money, 310, 310 million, that, that the property owner that lives four blocks away is not coughing up that money, that they're not what you're talking about when you say city's participation. But the people in Fremont tonight are going to be screaming because they think, like I do, that that money that they did not get from the owners of the chicken plant or the developers is actually coming out of this taxpayer's product pocket. Because, excuse me, where else would they get the money for the city's participation? A loan? Well, that doesn't sound right either. So I have sent a letter to Nebraska Attorney General. I'm not going to sue you myself, but he needs to get all of the different bodies in this city to get rules that are very similar. I'm not against low-income housing, but we need to understand. And we need more citizen input and some two-way conversations so that we don't misunderstand. That's on you, not me. That's on the lawyers, not me. All of these bodies are different. They all try to find a way to get around citizen comments in a different way, and that's got to stop. Because if it doesn't, we will all misunderstand each other a lot longer and a lot worse, particularly in today's environment. So let's have some open two-way discussion and explain it. If you can't explain it, then have your lawyers behind you explain it, but don't cut us off. Don't try to obfuscate what it is that's actually happening. The World Herald prints the Fremont Tribune, but the World Herald doesn't print what they print here, there, they don't print it here. But they, for Fremont, they're explaining TIF in a way that we never hear here, and it's got people very upset. It's going to happen here, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
I know. All right. First of all, Mr. Store, I don't think you want to understand this because if you did, it would put an end to you appearing before us to, when you're constantly complaining. Sit down. This is not for you to-
You're not supposed to reply to me.
No. What, now, I find it interesting, too, that here I am trying to explain something, and Mr. Store leaves the room so that he can't hear the explanation, which is exactly to my point. So thank you for, thank you for proving my point. So what I was also going to say, and I will continue to say, is first of all, there are no taxpayer dollars being given to this project. And next, the amount of public input is, first of all, this is the project plan, so there's, then will come the, the redevelopment agreement, but I'll back up even there for anyone who might still be listening, and hopefully Mr. Store might be out in the lobby listening, is that after the TIF committee, it goes to the planning board for public hearing on the, on the project plan. It then comes before us. It then goes back to the planning board for the redevelopment agreement stage, and then it comes back to us again. So I counted four public hearings. Am I missing any, Don?
Yes.
Okay, so they're, they're playing, and, and how many months does that go over, Don? At least, you know, if, in best-case scenario, five or six months. So the argument that Mr. Store loves to come down here and, and continue to bore me with is just, it's getting tired. Thank you.
Thank you. And one thing that I would add to that is that it's not $310 million we're talking about here, but $310,000. And if $310,002 TIF funds can help produce 11, 11 units of affordable housing that's so badly needed in the community, I'm all for it. No further lights.
Motion approved.
Second.
We all wanted to say that.
Roak.
Ro. Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 16 is approved, six to zero. Item 17, a resolution to approve the Eastside 1620 Clark Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 1620 Clark Street in an amount up to $310,000.
Public hearing and vote on number 17 is today. The applicant, please, Mr. Seaton.
Yes, good afternoon. Don Seaton, City Planning Department, on behalf of the project. And just as an aside, I have given the gentleman who complains all the time about TIF my business card with a handwritten invitation on the back, so if he wants conversation, it has been offered. I just want that on the record. Anyway, this project is also an affordable housing project, brought to us by Holy Name Housing. It's basically kind of a bookend for the one that we just reviewed. This one's located here at 1620 Clark Street. Again, very similar. Instead of 13 units, this one- It's basically kind of a bookend for the one that we just reviewed. This one's located here at 1620 Clark Street. Again, very similar. Instead of thirteen units, this one has twelve units. Be also arranged in row house fashion. Again, low-income housing tax credits are involved, both federal and state low-income housing tax credits. And this one, the city is providing $228,000 in HUD home funds for the project. So again, income limits are imposed for the developer and for the tenants that live in the structure. Total project investment in this site is about $3.8 million. The request is the same as, same as the last one, $310,000 is the TIF support requested. Project meets the required criteria of our TIF program. It's an appropriate land use for the location, complies with the goals of the city's master plan. And just as a reminder for any other citizens here today, no city money goes into this. The TIF money that goes into this project is money that is generated by the project itself. If the project didn't exist, those TIF funds wouldn't exist. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today?
Hello again, Matthew Kavanaugh, Holy Name Housing, 4324 Fort Street. Just here to answer any questions if there are any. Again, this project is almost identical to the previous one with one fewer unit. Happy to answer any questions.
Same sixty percent AMI?
Yep, same income limits, yeah, exactly.
Great. Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you. I just wanted to note for the record that there was no opposition to this one, and I'd like to move for approval.
Second. Roll call.
Row.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seventeen is approved, six to zero. Item eighteen, to consider a Class C liquor license for Bob and Willie's Bowl located at 3724 Farnham Street. A's communication from the planning department regarding permits for the outdoor area.
Public hearing and vote on number eighteen is today. Proponents, please. Mr. Kelly.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. Sean Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue, appearing on behalf of the applicant, here to answer any questions. Of course, the comments from the planning department with the building permits are perfectly acceptable.
Thank you. Any other proponents today on number eighteen? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. I'll remind councilmembers, this is subject to permits.
Motion approved. Subject to permits, second.
Roll call.
Row.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item nineteen, to consider a Class C liquor license for Law Voltaire Restaurant located at 569 North 155th Plaza.
Public hearing and vote on number nineteen is today. The applicant, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Burkhar, 6457 Francis Street, Suite 100, here with and on behalf of my client, Wilson Calisette Williams Cheff, Wilson LLC, here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Row.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item nineteen is approved, six to zero. Item twenty, to consider a Class C liquor license for Lemon Drop Lounge located at 5423 South 36th Street.
Public hearing and vote on number twenty is today. The applicant, please.
Good afternoon, Council, Brant Christensen, 5423 South 36th Street.
And I'm Heidi Christensen, 5423 South 36th Street as well.
Just here to answer questions.
Yeah.
Great. I think Councilman Palermo has a bunch of questions.
We knew he would.
Sure does.
Are there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Councilman Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. and Mrs. Christensen, thanks for being here, weighing it out.
Sure.
Now you know why once in a while I need to stop in, right?
Yes.
I'll see you every Tuesday.
Yeah.
I think you all need to join us.
Happy hour for the council, right?
Yeah.
But no, thanks for your investment in this area, especially with everything going on along Q Street. I appreciate it. Thanks for your continued investment in the kids within our community. I see you have your PACE jacket on. You both have been big supporters of the PACE program, helping lots of kids throughout the city, no matter what you're classified. So I appreciate that. But here's your chance. You get thirty seconds. It's your free commercial that's aired worldwide.
I'll make it quick.
What would I order if I was hungry and needed a drink?
We have, we have local, as Vinnie knows, I'm an Iowa boy, I'll always live in Iowa, but I, South Omaha reminds me of a small town. We have a little bit of everybody that comes in there and hangs out, a lot of good old SOBs that hang out in there. And we have good Iowa organic beef that I pick up three or four times a week. So come have a hamburger.
How about chicken wings, too?
We've got the jumbo wings. We have the jumbo wings. Got it all.
And Heidi, what would I order to drink?
Well, I mean, Tito's, I suppose.
Probably. Thanks for being here, appreciate it. Motion, motion to approve.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Row.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty is approved, six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item twenty-one, to consider a Class C liquor license for Danny's Bar and Grill located at 2007 North 72nd Street.
Public hearing and vote on number twenty-one is today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, members of the council. Sean Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. This is in my district. It's a great neighborhood bar, great history to it. I'm definitely supportive today. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. Great name.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Row.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-one is approved, six to zero. Item twenty-two, to consider a Class C liquor license for Cumbia located at 329 South 16th Street, Suite 1. A's communication from the planning department regarding permits for the outdoor area.
Public hearing and vote on number twenty-two is today. Mr. Kelly.
Mr. President, members of the council. Sean Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue, here on behalf of the applicant. Again, same with the planning department's building permit requirement is acceptable.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Motion to accept permit.
Subject to permits?
Subject to permits. I wrote that down.
Second. Roll call.
Row.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero. Melton abstains. Item twenty-three, to consider a liquor license addition application for Culprits Cafe and Bakery located at 1603 Farnham Street to add an outdoor area. A's communication from the planning department regarding permits for the outdoor area.
Public hearing and vote on number twenty-three is today. The applicant, please.
My name's Luke Maybe with Culprits Cafe, here to answer any questions. Looking to add a patio and, yeah, extend our brunch.
Great. And your address, please?
What's that? Sixty-three, twenty-four Hamilton.
Thank you.
Yep.
Are there any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
I'll try this again. Subject to permit, I vote for a motion to approve.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Row.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
So council members, number twenty-four has to be removed from consent just because it has amendment of the whole. So we'll take items number twenty-five through thirty-one first, and those public hearings were held on August 24th.
Move the approval of twenty-five.
Roll call.
Row.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Roll call.
Row.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Public hearings on agenda items number thirty-two through fifty-four are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent, I'll acknowledge we have the applicants for number thirty-five by Zoom, and also the applicant for items number thirty-seven through forty-one by Zoom if needed.
Can I be approved?
I should first take proponents on all of these items. I don't see any proponents in the audience. Are there any opponents? Seeing none, those public hearings are closed, and there's a motion in a second. Roll call.
Row.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item fifty-five, an ordinance to acquire private property for the Carter Lake Emergency Force Main Replacement Public Improvement Project.
Public hearing on number fifty-five is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.